Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Can we get a ...
Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Lofterston?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Mr. Meeks is absent this evening.
Okay. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second or ...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda's adopted. Planning Commission reports. Do any planning commissioners have anything to report on this evening?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Hockenberry?
Well, I'd like Bob to start out with a little ... Because you filled in for me at that one meeting, then I've got some other things on affordable housing.
I'm sorry, I couldn't wait here.
She was wondering if you could fill in on what happened at the affordable housing meeting that you went to?
The request, and then I'll fill in on the rest of it, okay? Thank you.
At the meeting, the city staff made their presentation, and the recommendation that was adopted unanimously was to wait until the work group that has been assigned to make recommendations for affordable housing policy, rather than jump ahead and to make a decision right at this point to implement a policy that the city staff recommended. Everyone unanimously felt that it was premature, so it was without prejudice. Thank you. Meaning that we were not judging on the policy recommendations itself by the city staff, but what we were doing was saying it was premature and that really the city council should have the benefit of hearing from the working group. And that was the unanimous decision.
And if I could just fill in with ...
Just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
What committee is this that we're talking about?
Yeah, I was going to just fill in with that. It was a specially called meeting of the Affordable Housing ... The group within a group that accepts applications for money for affordable housing projects. And it was a project that was introduced by staff through council and would propose taking 50 percent of the now affordable housing fund that we have, so it'd be about $250,000-some thousand dollars. And it would have been to allow people to apply who, you know, qualified, would allow people to qualify for help with down payments and things like that. There was a lot of good things in the program, but I think if you're looking at a whole umbrella of an affordable housing program, this was, you know, I think jumping gun a little bit, not looking, it's looking at one piece and not as a whole. And so I was quite concerned, and I was glad Bob could go to the meeting for me. Unfortunately, it seems like council is downstairs discussing it right now. It seems like they really want, really, really, really want to hurry up this thing. Now, as I said, it's got some good points to it, but where does it fit in with an overall type of policy that may need funding in different areas? And it's kind of a shame that it's going forward, and I don't know why it has to go forward like they're considering it tonight to bring it forth next week. Bob, I'm sorry.
No, I'd have to say that I'm very disappointed in hearing that. If the city council asks for a citizen group to give its recommendations, and these people put their time in to make these recommendations, then the city council should at least have the courtesy to have this group present their outcomes and their recommendations. I mean, these are people who are volunteering their time, so I would just say for myself, I'm very disappointed, and I really wonder why it's being pushed through by the city council, if that's the case.
Okay.
I'm still not clear on what this group was. Is it somebody that was appointed by the committee?
I would like to be able to tell you what. It's a group that's ...
But were they appointed by somebody?
You want to help me out? Because it's a group that's only called together and it hasn't been called together for a long, long while. Go for it. Since I'm here, I'll take the advantage, Chair, if you don't mind my clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Muster.
It's the Affordable Housing Fund Committee, which is a subgroup of the Housing Commission, and it's chartered through the Affordable Housing Fund to look at how to utilize money that's in the Affordable Housing Fund, the $564,000 that Ms. Hockenberry mentioned currently exists there now. They make a recommendation to the Housing Commission, the Housing Commission makes a recommendation to council, and then council makes a decision whether to utilize that money for that purpose. Council is in work session right now. This is the second item on their agenda this evening. It has not started, however, before I came up. They were still on watershed. So a decision has not been made. The Affordable Housing Fund Committee has, will just be submitting a memo to council with the recommendation and the full minutes to defer until the policy's done. The Housing Commission is meeting concurrently, and I don't know the decision of the Housing Commission yet, whether they will endorse the Housing Fund Committee's recommendation or recommend it proceed. Thank you. It's really a shame, because one of the big questions that we've been confronted with forever is units or money? And what do we do with the money? And what do we do with an affordable housing fund? And I think until we can look at the entire picture, it is very, very ... I don't think it's good to be passing something that, again, it had some good qualities to it, but it should be taken in an overall umbrella, look at the whole policy.
Well, is this recommendation to the Housing Commission something that will be coming to us if the city council decides to do a first reading on this? Will all of this come to us as ... I mean, referred to boards and commissions, or is this just something that goes to the Affordable Housing Group?
The standard procedure would be the Affordable Housing Fund Committee to the Housing Commission and back to council. It's just a funding mechanism, so it would only be if they chose to send it out to boards and commissions. In the past, you all have seen applications where the money was proposed to be used, but it was tied to an SC and a site plan, which was the Will.
I'm not asking to see it, Sydney.
I'm not anticipating you will. I don't know whether council will proceed or not, based on the discussion yet to be had this evening.
It sounds like the council has to look at the recommendations tonight, look at the minutes, and they'll decide where to proceed. And if the recommendation was not to proceed, hopefully they'll hold back and wait till everyone's ready. Yes?
As someone who is very interested in affordable housing in the city, I'd be very disappointed if they went ahead and approved this, what the staff had recommended. I have great respect for our city staff, and at the same time, there was about, there's about a half a million dollars in this fund, and the recommendation was to use up half of it for a subsidy for first-time buyers. That could benefit as little as three families in the City of Falls Church. And I, along with other members, had a problem with that. We, at the same time, our primary problem was that we felt that the policy, or the working group, should be able to give the recommendations to the policy. But I have to say, the actual recommendation itself, to me, didn't really address affordable housing issues in any meaningful way in the city, so I'd be very concerned if they did pass that.
Okay. And it seemed like, excuse me, Councilmember Webb was thinking it might be really going through tonight, so ... But on to other things with the affordable housing policy. I just gave you all an outline of things that we're looking at for the affordable housing policy. We had a long meeting the other night, and it just brings up some areas that we're looking at. Excuse my voice, I've been sick all week. But no, 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 no. I promise I won't throw up on you, John. I just won't do it. I won't, I just won't do it. I don't think I'm catching it. Oh, it's just yucky.
Okay, well, thank you for that line. It helps to know.
Aren't you glad that information is out there? Anyway, there are a couple of things coming up, which I find very, very valuable. First, there is a questionnaire, questionnaire going out on monkey, monkey survey, survey monkey.
Survey monkey, right.
And on, and it's going to go to all city employees, all school employees, all a big business like Kaiser, any of the big places around, and it's going to be given out, and it's going to be online and given out as a hard copy also, which might give us some ideas of what we're going to be doing with stuff.
Is this going to be related to workforce housing?
Mm-hmm. I think that's going to be our big focus right there. It's, you know, as I said the other night at the meeting, anything that's coming in is all going to be small units. One of the people, one of our staff was talking about three bedrooms. I said, "You're not going to see any three bedrooms in any of these proposals, none."
Well, we have Pearson that has three bedrooms.
Yeah, but that's in the past.
Right.
But right now, you know, we're getting studios and one-bedrooms. But the other thing is, they're going to have, we're holding public forums on tomorrow night, the 22nd and the 29th. 22nd's going to be over at the Housing Corpse place over in Cherry Hill, Winter Hill.
On Winter Hill.
And the 29th is going to be up at George Mason High School. So I'm really hoping that we can get city staff, school staff, you know, a lot of our workforce interested in this, because I think that's going to be where. Because when you get the new housing rentals of the one-bedroom studio, the difference in rental is not going to be that great, whereas the difference in selling of his condos was huge.
Right. So basically, there's a forum tomorrow night, 2:22, at Winter Hill, and one on 2:29 at George Mason High School, and it's for citizens and city employees, school employees, employees to come in and hear about our affordable housing policy.
And it's been put out to all people and everything.
Okay.
But I think there's some interesting stuff going on, and I think that, you know, we need to, need to look at affordable housing stock that we have and what we're going to do with it, because it's been going downhill as far as the number of units. So there's a lot of things there. The other thing is, is just educating. You know, we've had some battlefields with affordable housing, and so people have kind of chosen sides on that, but yet we need to get people back to seeing the entire picture of how important this is to the viability of the City of Falls Church and surrounding. One of the other big things coming out of this group is the possibility of doing more cooperative work with Arlington and Fairfax.
Okay.
If we can't afford it right here, let's see what we can do, helping out and chipping in with other places. So it's lots of good stuff going on.
Okay, thank you.
Good committee.
Any other planning commissioner? Mr. Wodisca?
Yeah, real quickly, the pedestrian, bicycle, and traffic calming committee met on Wednesday. I was out for business out of town, but in preparation for that meeting, we were sent a very comprehensive draft, and I have read it extensively, and it is a very impressive piece of work. I don't know the outcome of that meeting, though Jim might or others might, but what they were going into the meeting to discuss was something that is in fantastic shape and will, there's a few more meetings to get some things ironed out, but it'll be coming before people, I think, fairly soon, the next month or so. It's an excellent document.
Okay, great. Anything else? No? Okay. Receipt of petitions. Do we have any communications on anything not on the agenda, Ms. G?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. And planning director's report, Mr. Snyder?
Yes, we've been working on the small area plan. We'll be talking about that this evening in a work session with you all, and looking forward to a joint work session with the city council on March 5th. We have the draft plan that we'll be distributing tonight for you all to take a look at, and that'll be the beginning of, you know, a look at the area, and I'll make a presentation on that as well. So we'll have a chance to talk about it tonight and then also at that joint work session. We're looking ahead to plan a session, I believe, in May. I don't know, we have dates set yet to try to get together on the Greenway Downs issue in the neighborhood. Ms. G is working with the school, Thomas Jefferson, to see if we can find a time and a place. I believe it's early May we're looking at, Ms. G.
We have asked for Wednesday the 2nd, but have not heard back.
We'll keep you posted on that. Staff has been working with consultants on the Thomas Jefferson School project. Site plan has not yet been submitted, but we've had a number of meetings with some of their consultants to help point them in the right direction and facilitate their getting their plans and information together so they can make a submission. That should be coming forward this spring. So those are the highlights of things I have to report on. Also, does, we do, it does appear that the Fulton Street House contract is going ahead from what everything I understand. So we'll keep you posted on that, but that looks like it is going ahead, so.
We were able to deal with their zoning issues, then?
Yes, we've, looking at the, as you may know, the comprehensive plan changed Cedar Street from right-of-way to open space, and so based on that, we will not be requiring front yard setbacks off a street which is no longer a street and will never be used as a street. It will be a trail. It'll be coming forward, I think, in the PED plan for trail improvement. So it's, it makes no sense to require a setback from a paper, what was a paper street, now a right-of-way that is for parks and trails. So that will allow appropriate development to the rear of that house, I think, with access over Oak Street to a garage, as I understand it, that will have access from Oak Street, replacing the old garage that's there. And they'll be able to do appropriate additions to the house that will have to come through Harp. So we'll, you know, things could happen, but as far as we know, that's moving ahead.
Okay, great. Any questions for Mr. Snyder?
Yes. Would it be possible to have it actually designated as parkland or even just a small sign so that it doesn't, and people don't come to us later saying we'd like a piece of that property?
Well, I think it has been officially changed in the comprehensive plan in 2005. It was one of the changes made. So it is officially on the plan, no longer right-of-way, but parks and trails, I believe. So, and that's another thing, as we go through the update with the comp plan, we have a number of these rights of ways that don't exist, don't exist, they're on paper, they're not open, they're not used, and those are cleanup kinds of things I think we can do as part of the update to the comp plan, is identify those and make those same changes.
Okay. Anyone else for, Ms. Hockenberry?
Excuse me, just briefly, I think we do a lot of good work on planning commission and council and all of our boards and commissions, but darn, I'm really proud of that. You know, just our ability, our situation there where we were able to turn something around and help move it forward in a very positive way, and I just, I really feel good about that.
Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed and hope it all proceeds.
Thank you for all your work to try to work it out.
But it looks like it's on a good path, so we will knock on wood and hope that it proceeds in a positive way.
That's a good story.
Any other questions? I agree with you. I'm glad to see this go well. I was very concerned we were up to the wire on this. I just want to ask one question. I understand, like you said, you're working with the schools on the TJ plans. Do you have any idea when this would fall in our schedule? I know that the first meeting in April is spring break, and I know I will be out of town, and I believe Mr. Lawrence will be out of town. So we're going to, you know, counting on when this falls, we're going to need to make sure we have a quorum here to deal with it.
We've been developing, Elizabeth Perry's been working on several alternative timelines. They have not yet submitted plans.
Right.
So, but we'll work hard to make sure it fits with your schedule, but at this point they haven't submitted. Again, we're trying to encourage them and work with them so they know what to submit.
All right, good. I mean, I know in the timeline I saw, it had no time card out for site plans, so I just want to make sure we don't slow them down if we can. Okay.
We've tried to be proactive with them in terms of going to meetings. I know Mr. Lawrence has been at meetings, staff has been at meetings, met with our consultants, and trying to let them know what they need to do in terms of getting their materials together and getting it submitted for review.
All right. Mr. Lofterston?
Mr. Snyder, have they mentioned anything, has the Board of Education mentioned anything about the concerns that were brought up in regards to LEED certification for the Thomas Jefferson addition?
I think they're aware of that. I guess one of the questions is, and I haven't had specific discussions with them about that, but I think they're aware of that question. And I think one of the questions for the commission is, is that something where we look for that as a performance issue that matches our objectives, or is it something where we're actually looking for certification through the green, through the green building program? In any event, I think they are aware of the issue, yes.
I would just, I would just like to say, I have to admit that I'm disappointed that I've not received any correspondence from the Board of Education or their architect as far as the concerns that we had when we met with them. They said they would, and they didn't, and so I'm very disappointed in that. They did say that they were going, the architect did say that they were going to look at the LEED scorecard because they felt that they were very close to certification, and that they would get back to us, and that was a month ago, and that has not happened. And I, you know, I'm just very disappointed in that, and I don't think that's a show of good faith. And I think that ...
Well, I wouldn't, let's not, let's not, let's wait and see what their application looks like at this point. We've not, appreciate your concern, we'll try to relay that to them, but at this point, we're still looking for information back from them, and we'll make sure we incorporate your concerns.
My concern with that is that the clock is running out, and they haven't provided any more information in a month. And my concern is that the clock will run out, and then all of a sudden it'll be too late to address these issues. And I think that asking them to come back and having them say that, yes, they would come back, and they didn't, I think that's a pretty fair request. Because I think that, at least as far as I'm concerned, as I pointed out at that meeting, how can the city possibly ask real estate developers to build to LEED certification when we, as a community, won't even make that investment? And if you look at our fellow jurisdictions around here, they all have green building policies. City of Falls Church does not. We're the only jurisdiction in this area. Alexandria has it, Arlington has it, Fairfax County has it. We don't have one. And I don't think that speaks well to us as a community by not having one. I think it's very short-sighted. I think that if we really want to position the City of Falls Church as a place where you'll have good buildings and sustainability is, I believe, you know, part of the best practices of good planning for a community. I'd be hard-pressed, I would welcome anybody to bring up a case where sustainability just isn't important, and I feel that we, as a community, really need to make that statement. And there's no way that we can sit up here as a planning commission and tell a developer, "You really should build according to LEED certification," when our own Board of Education, our own community, won't even build public buildings to that certification. And, you know, we've heard arguments from real estate developers that say, "Well, it's equivalent, it's LEED equivalent." Well, my answer to that is that I don't think if somebody proposed, you know, an equivalency of, but not certification for our educational program, I don't think people would go along with that. And I think that's an important part of our education program, is that it is third-party certified. And I think that as far as sustainability, which in the overwhelming majority of communities, it's an agreed-upon fact that we really do have to address your carbon footprint, we really have to do something about this. If you don't have third-party certification, it's not the same. It doesn't have that same level of commitment. So I really wish that we could have heard back from the Board of Education and their architect, and I think that a month is plenty of time to hear back. So I would, I would ask you to encourage them to get back to us as soon as possible so that we can address this issue as soon as possible.
Mr. Lawrence?
Sorry, Jim, you want to say something?
Yeah, we're, you know, we're doing our best to engage with them and urge them to get their materials together and start the process. So that's certainly one of the issues that they've been made aware of, and we'll keep you posted on any progress. At this point, we don't have a submission, so we have been meeting with them regularly, though.
Yeah, and I would just say, it's one thing to say we need to have a city policy, but A, I mean, ZOAC didn't even recommend any environmental standards
No, we did.
... on city buildings. No, commercial, yes. Not city buildings, not schools. I went back and looked at the recommendations.
Well, that's a challenge.
But secondly, if you're going to have a city policy, you need a city policy. You don't take one school and say, "We're going to develop a city policy based on this one school." You have a policy for the city, and you apply it to projects, not the other way around.
Well, I'm saying that this planning commission needs to take leadership in establishing that policy. ZOAC came out with the policy that, yes, commercial, commercial buildings should be LEED certified silver.
Right, commercial.
And I think I, we just, and perhaps this is an oversight, but we had the assumption that if we're making that recommendation for commercial buildings, that we're also making that recommendation for our own buildings. I have to be honest with you, it really didn't occur to us that we would make a recommendation that commercial developers build LEED silver and the city not. And that was an oversight, and I would have to apologize.
It was definitely an oversight.
But it didn't even occur to us that somebody could interpret that as that, but we would expect less of our own community than we are of real estate developers.
This is ...
And I agree with you that we need to have a policy, but we need to move that policy along, and this is very important. And I don't want this opportunity of Thomas Jefferson Elementary School addition to go through without LEED certification. I do agree with you, John. We do need a policy, and we need to, we need to, we need to get it established. But this is, this is an opportunity that, at least for me, came up a month ago with the CIP. I had no idea we were building an addition to TJ, and I think that we shouldn't let that opportunity go by because it will set, I think, a very bad precedent for our community if we can't even get LEED certification on our own school. From what I understand, the new school in Arlington, oh, gosh, is it Washington, I believe? It's Gold.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the high school.
And we can't even get LEED certification on our own building? It, it's just a poor reflection on our community. It just is. And it doesn't do well for enhancing our brand as a community where you really want high-quality real estate investment to come in. And I'm a very strong supporter of having high-quality commercial real estate development come in. But if we can't even say that, "Well, you know, we don't really have the money, and money's tight," and so every developer that comes before this commission is going to give that argument, and how are we going to say, "Well, I'm sorry, but you need to build LEED certification because it's important, but we, as a community, won't even do it?" That's a real problem in my mind.
Yeah, but I think we're going to have trouble getting a citywide policy in the next month, because, I mean, this is on a short fuse. They have to break ground by a certain amount of time, or they're not going to be able to open in September 2013.
The Environmental Services Council has years, at least from when I was on it, the last three or four years, has come up here all the time in front of the city council when the city council is here, and made recommendations. So this is not anything new. It would be not anything new for this, for this city, for the, first of all, the planning commission to take a leader position, leadership position and say, "This is important for our community, this is part of best practices in planning for communities, this is the right thing to do." And then for the city council to take a leadership position and say, "Yes, this is the right thing to do, our sister communities look around what they're doing, we need to at least," right now, we don't have the official policy in place, but we can make the executive decision to fund having certification for the Thomas Jefferson addition. The architects themselves said that they felt they were beyond LEED certification, with the exception of some money that would be required to basically what's called modeling, which is, which is running ... which is, which is running, which is running a software program to make sure your design is going to do what it's supposed to do. They were short of some money on that. So that's not a tremendous amount of money. They feel they're even close to LEED silver, but except they didn't want to spend the money on modeling. So I agree with you 100 percent, we should have a long-range policy, but just look around at the other jurisdictions, and I think that the planning commission and the city council should take that leadership position and say, yes, this is the right thing to do, and let's start with Thomas Jefferson addition.
Okay.
Good luck in the next month.
Ms. Rogers, did you want to make a comment?
No, no.
Your microphone's on, I was just checking.
The conference of plan update is a perfect place for us to, to help articulate some of the important things that you all are talking about. So as we update that, I mean, that's a very important place to set the vision and talk about our expectations for the community, both public, private development. So as we look at that chapter and want to update it, these are the kinds of things that...
When is that supposed to come up?
Well, this is.
Well, we're working on it right now.
This is the one we're working on right now.
Yeah.
At any rate, I'm just saying, this is, this is an area for us to look at, and as that gets modified, these are the kinds of changes that can be made and articulated there.
I just want to say, I personally agree with you that the TJ addition should be LEED certified. And I think that it is wrong for us to, to public buildings that aren't LEED certified. And I kind of felt that the Zoak recommendations, even though it specifically said "commercial buildings," I really saw it as any large public structure, commercial or city. That's the way I took the spirit of it.
That was.
That was the spirit.
And I think what I'm disappointed is, we went out of our way to attend an AAB meeting so that we could get educated on what was coming, because we knew the site plan timing was going to be really tight. In fact, the original schedule didn't even show time for the site plan. So we knew we were going to have to fit it into our schedule and try to do it fast to meet their timeline. And I think what I'm upset about is, we attended the AAB meeting, we pointed out some issues, including the LEED, and we were told they would get back to us with some numbers on what the additional costs were. Because, you know, we can recommend it, and we can say to the council, we think the money should be found for LEED, but we don't know how much money we're talking about, because those numbers were not given to us.
And we asked that.
And we did ask for it, and we, and we were told we would receive it. So that, that's where I'm a little, I guess, concerned, that we've asked for the data, and we weren't given the data. And it means that we can't really make a full recommendation because we don't know what the costs are. And maybe the costs are outside our ability to move this project forward on the timeline that's been presented. But anyway, I would just say, Mr. Snyder, if the staff is working with them, you can maybe push forward that we would really like to see that data. The architect said it would be no problem, and that they would be able to get that cost information to us. Because I think it's hard for us to recommend to the council that the money be found unless we know how much money we're talking about. And I personally think if it's going to be LEED, it has to be certified. Anytime a developer has said to us, I'll build it to LEED standard, but I'm not paying for certification, we've said, no, that's wrong, that we need the certification. So I think that, I guess you can convey to them that we're looking for that information that was promised, that we do want to see it LEED. I don't want to see what happened with Mary. Okay, someone to see it LEED, okay. And that, I'm still upset about what happened with Mary Ellen Henderson, that we went to the trouble of putting together a team of citizens and board and commission to help make that building greener, and almost everything that that group came up with was rejected. So I don't want to see us do that again. So anyway, I guess we probably need to move on to the agenda, we actually have a lot of items on here.
It'd certainly be an important element of their plan that should come forward before you. And at this point, we're looking for them to develop their plans and submit them for review.
Okay.
And I would also just note that Zoak recommendations was LEED silver, and I believe that's what we ought to have as a public building standard. Because if we're asking developers to meet that standard, how can we not meet the standard ourselves?
I think that's a larger policy issue, that's one of the things we can discuss for the comp plan anyway. Mr. Lawrence?
Does that mean for the city hall expansion, we need to open it up tonight and talk about LEED silver for city hall? It's pretty much done in the CIP.
Well, that's not coming up before.
It's in the CIP. It's in the CIP, it's a city building.
Wow.
It's a major renovation. I mean, we need a policy. And what we're doing is saying, well, we'll have a policy here, and then we'll sort of apply it to others, but we're doing city hall, and there's never been any discussion of LEED. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, where are we going? If every city building, if every new city building, every major renovation should have LEED into it, we've got how many millions in the CIP tonight for city hall that we're not addressing?
That's actually...
But John, those plans aren't ready for site plan yet. We're talking about something that's moving forward, as you yourself said, much more quickly.
Right, but if, I mean, the whole idea of the CIP is you're putting money against something, and if, you know, LEED is not cheap. I mean, if you're building to it isn't cheap, getting certified isn't cheap. So, you know, the CIP is about funding capital projects, and if that's something that people should be factoring in, I mean, it should be discussed.
I agree, it should be discussed. I will say that the first phase for city hall is actually mostly repair. It's not any major construction. So I think you're correct, next year, when we're working on the CIP and we're actually looking at the money that's going to go to an addition, we do need to have that LEED conversation.
And this is a five-year plan, though.
Well, it is a five-year plan. Well, we could go back and do it now, but luckily, we do have time on the, on the part that actually involves actual construction. Right now, the first phase of it that we'll be moving forward within next year is mostly repair. And dealing with the different issues that are actually, there's no new construction involved here. So you're, but you are right, when that comes about, we need to put LEED in there, into that story and discuss it.
Well, or get a policy. Also, I would just like to mention when Zoak went, before we went out and recommended a policy, we talked to a number of different stakeholders, including real estate developers. And we asked them, today, to build LEED silver, is there a lot of, a large cost difference between not building LEED? And they said, no. They said, the trick, he said, there's very little or no premium building LEED silver over not building LEED buildings. And they said, the thing to keep in mind is that you need to incorporate it in the very beginning in your design. But the, over the last three to five years, architects have more and more embraced the sustainability practices reflected in LEED. And if you introduce those in the very beginning of your design process, then it's little or no cost premium to build LEED silver today. And that, and we came across no real estate developer that said anything differently than that.
I think when we get to the point with the city hall that we're actually talking about the new construction, we definitely should start with LEED from the very beginning.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the TJ addition is almost, almost a standalone. You know, it's totally compacted.
No, it's a separate, it's considered a separate building.
Right, right.
It's a standalone. Whereas when we get further into anything with city hall, that's not standalone at all, that's adding onto an old building, just like we've done with Mason and all over the place. But, you know, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think that, you know, I think you're probably concerned about having to cut back on the size of the project, you know, as far as educationally and things like that. So, you know, I just think we need the numbers. And I think we don't have anything to work with, so we're going around in circles. And we really do need the numbers to just look to see what it would be, you know, with, without, what we can do about it. But I do think, you know, of course, we talked about a, a policy way back with Henderson. I certainly agree with you, Melissa, my God, you know, it's a great little school, but, you know, come on.
Right.
I spent half my life there. But, you know, that was a disappointment for a lot of people in the community, it really was. And, but I do think we need to work a little bit harder on this.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I think the first step is, we'd just like to get the information that was promised. And that would give us some information to work with. Yeah, prior to the site plan, if possible.
Again, we're encouraging them to get their plans and records, everything together for submission, so.
Okay, great.
Certainly an important item for that, on that list.
Well, let's move on, on to our agenda on old business. First item up is FY 13-17 Capital Improvements Program, CIP. All funds, general funds, school fund, utilities fund. We're going to be holding a public meeting and making our recommendations to the city. So Ms. Mester, did you have anything you wanted to go over at this point, or?
Highlights, okay.
Okay. So we'll have some highlights from Ms. Mester.
Do you have highlights from this?
Yeah. Well, no, we're first doing CIP. Yeah.
Oh, the CIP.
Yep, CIP first.
Just bringing up some of the documents, CIP folder, in case we need them, but I'm not doing a present, formal PowerPoint or anything this evening. Thank you, Jim. This evening, I'm bringing up the documents just in case the planning commission has questions, or I hope I am, it's a little slow. What I wanted to do this evening is just highlight a few points that I've noted in the final memo that came to council, and highlight for the public some of the process that the planning commission went through in terms of reviewing the projects. Of course, the goal is to adopt the five-year CIP, the capital improvements programs, that's for long-term planning of our infrastructure needs, anything that has a lifespan over one year and over $100,000 in value. And the planning commission's role is promulgated under the city code and charter that you shall recommend to the council, the projects, as well as the means for financing them. The planning commission received the proposed CIP on January 17th. You've held two work sessions on the January 30th and February 6th, had a public hearing on the 6th, and then this evening is your final public hearing with the staff request to formulate a recommendation that can be forwarded to council in the city manager's proposed budget, which will be delivered on March 12th. As noted in the memo, starting on page two, there's a few updates or changes to the documents that would go in the CIP notebook, but that also would then be the basis for planning commission's action this evening. The first one noted is the planning commission's request after discussion at the last work session with the library board of trustees and director to put $2 million into FY 13 as an option, defunding availability in case a building or some site became available. That is in the CIP, that's proposed before you revised in the project description on 6-11, and then also in the summary tables. I will note that the city manager met with the library board of trustees this past Wednesday, and there will be some follow-up with myself and city manager, library board of director, and I believe just one board of trustee member to talk a little further about what is the plan and the project, and how would it fit in? And if you had the land, how does it kind of unfold if you only have the land? And so that will occur before the city manager's budget is proposed, so that we can come to consensus on that. The city manager is still concerned that we'd have money in there for a part of it, not the whole big picture in the study. So we'll be doing that before March 12th, delivery of the proposed budget. Also, a minor update to the utility sewer chart was done. The $400,000 annual rehab money was switched to pay-as-you-go instead of debt-funded. And then for the fire station and the parks and rec, they were more minor edits to the documents. For transportation, I did want to highlight for the planning commission, as you recall, we discussed for the Safe Route to School and the RSTP that we had hoped to get state VDOT approval so we can move the projects forward into FY 12 and FY 13. We did not receive that in time for this evening. So those two projects are still in the out years, but you'll see in the proposed sample motion before you this evening, that I am requesting that you, in your motion, support adjustments, that the staff could bring those forward upon receipt from VDOT, so we can do those projects sooner than later. With the Safe Route to School, when we actually get the VDOT approval, we'll have six months to expend that money. And so if we get it before March 12th, I will move it forward in the CIP as recommended by the city manager. If not, hopefully, it'll be before council adopts the CIP. But if planning commission concurs with that, I'd appreciate the support, so it'd be clear to council when staff moves it forward. The CMAC did have a minor change since we discussed that in work session, in that we needed $18,000 to finish out the hybrid pickup trucks when the actual cost proposals came in. And so the bus stop improvements project in the CIP was reduced by $18,000. Minor impact overall, but it allows us to proceed with the, with the other grant allocation. You do have in your packet for updating to your notebook the information from the schools on their enrollment. It's a two-page document provided by Dr. Jones. The first page is a chart, and it describes the grades, the enrollment by grades now and not by schools. And it also gives you a little more granular detail in that it breaks it out by classes, so you don't just get an aggregate, this is how many students fit in Mount Daniel or Thomas Jefferson, you get how many students and sections are in kindergarten, first grade, or second grade, for example. And then on the second page, some capacity on where they are now, and what the CIP would provide in terms of Mount Daniel, Cherry Street, and Thomas Jefferson for expansion. And as well, on the second page, for each section, which is a class, you will get how many students per room are anticipated. So I hope that will provide you a little bit more information as it relates to the school CIP projects. Another highlight to make is that with the addition to the, 2 million to the CIP, we did revise the five-year projection chart, and that is also in your packet, and that's tab three, page 3-3, because it would change debt funding impacts for FY 15 if it's funded in FY 14. I did want to call your attention, Doe, to the debt service towards the bottom of that page where it says "new." You'll note in FY 13 now, there's $210,000 put in for debt service. Where when this was presented to the planning commission originally in January, that was at zero, because we were forecasting no debt service in FY 13 for projects funded in '13. We'd do it in the second half of the year, and the debt service would hit the subsequent fiscal year. But because of the cost of money being so advantageous right now, we went ahead and moved it forward. In fact, we had the refunding of the 2004 Mary Ellen Henderson. Bids closed today, and we actually had 13 financial institutions bid, and we got even a better price than we did in December with the other refunding. So I wanted to call that to your attention. So the things that are in FY 13, we would propose being able to do them earlier in the fiscal year instead of the second half. The debt service, with adding that, as well as adding the 2 million for the library, then the ratio is at 8.3. When you last saw it, it was 7.6, still well below the policy limit of 12%. To follow up on the conversation that the planning commission was just having on LEED certifications for city facilities, certainly, it is the city's goal, with the council's vision and with some of the environmental services task force and our Cliven Initiative, to have a policy. We don't yet. The projects that are in the CIP that are for general government facilities at city hall, as well as the Mount Daniel, the Cherry Street, or TJ, are all projects that obviously would follow a policy if so adopted. These projects, I know on the city hall side, I've looked at them from an energy efficiency, you know... you know, LEED design kind of build, so that would be upfront in our design piece. You know, even with the renovations, new HVAC, new windows, all to be green, looking at geothermal, these costs, however, do not have budgeted in certification. So if the policy is adopted, then we would incorporate that into our cost estimates. Because we have, as planned here for this year, I'm going out for the A&E for the central front entrance with construction hopefully next year, so we'll have that in the RFP. It goes out on the street, but right now it's a preferred since we don't have an adopted policy. And the final item to note for the Planning Commission then would be the last page of the memo, page 4, provides sample motions, one for approval, one for modifications if the Planning Commission so desires to make modifications this evening, and they would request that you specify those, and then a motion for denial. And once again, if that was to be the Planning Commission's intent to list the specifications for denial, staff is, however, recommending approval as presented in the revised pages for the Planning Commission this evening, and I'll be glad to go through any questions or more detail as you desire.
Thank you, Ms. Mester. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Mester at this point?
Yes, I have one.
Ms. Rogers.
On the, on the parks, would you go over one, just one more time, the $10,854? I'm finding it, I see where you took it off. My question is, is that still available for the parks?
Yes, it is still, it still is available. It was showing twice on both the West End Park and the Park Master Planning. So on the project sheet for Park Master Planning, the $10,000 is left, and then I've removed it from the West End because it was showing twice. So in the actual adopted budget accounting, there's the $10,000 plus. In the paperwork, it looked like there was $20,000.
Okay, well, how long is that available for spending?
It's three years from inactivity, so since it's something that has been going on, and I believe the director of Rexon Park is planning to use it to finish out the West End Park, it will not go stale and will be utilized shortly.
I just wanted to clarify that in my mind. Thank you, Cindy.
Ms. Wodisca.
Yeah, just relevant to the conversation we were having earlier, on the TJ school construction, the conversation I remember being about QSCAB bonds. It has the amounts here, one $5.9 million, excuse me, and the other $4 million, but those don't appear to make it all the way down to the sources portion. What was the arrangement, again, on those QSCAB bonds? Is the city putting up some sort of money on them or not?
The, those two projects should be down in the total debt finance with the other projects. The $3 million is QSCABS in the FY 12 this current fiscal year, and then the other $2.95 is city debt financed. The $4 million is totally city debt financed.
And that-
They are, the QSCABS is 0% interest, and for the first three years, the school board committed the debt service for the FY 12 money, $186,000 a year. So the $186,000 is sort of net of the total debt service, so it's not double counted because the school board's transferring it back.
So those aren't colored, though?
They would just be in the italics, so on the total funding, it's just below the But it's an aggregate, so it's more than the $5.95 and more than the $4 million because of the other City Hall projects and the stormwater debt service.
So which page are you looking at?
3-2 would have the total sources of funding.
Okay, so at the bottom of 3-2, the total debt finance line?
So FY 12 is showing over $7.5 million, and then for FY 13, it's $10.6 plus million.
I understand how that, how that's color-coded, but the total public facilities portion on 3-1 is $8.6 million, and that doesn't look like that's at all, that, or all of that is debt-funded. And then transportation-
The only other thing that would add for debt, debt finance then would be stormwater for $1.2, and the $200 for parks, and $500 for IT. All of the transportation is either grant or local pay-as-you-go funding.
And the, and the Park Master Plan?
Correct, that $200,000.
All right, I see the math here. All right, thank you.
It's easier when you see it on the spreadsheet because then I have my double-check formulas to make sure I didn't miss something.
Mr. Lofterson?
Was, was there an analysis by staff as far as how much extra cost it would be to go for LEED certification?
No, there was not.
Was there a reason for that, why there wasn't an effort made to look at that?
Both from staff resources and a lack of policy. I know we'll design it green, but we didn't put in the cost estimates for certification because it's not an adopted policy yet.
So we don't really know how much extra it would cost, then?
No, I do not.
Cindy, just one quick question on the Northwest Street improvements. The 372 in FY 14, is that just for, what, engineering? Because I can't imagine that would actually install sidewalks, would it? And I just don't see it anywhere else.
No, that is for design and implementation. That's the full amount of the grant award for the project. I don't see Mr. Hicks back up for watershed management. But that is-
Okay, so that's for the sidewalk on the west side of Northwest Street?
Right, there's two projects in that, just a moment, let me- 8-26 is the Northwest Street improvements projects, and 74, just under $75,000 is for engineering and design, and the rest is for construction.
Okay, so this will actually, this money is to build the entire thing?
Correct. This one, as well as the Mary Ellen Henderson drop-off, the other half of the Safe Route to School is to actually implement.
Okay, it just seemed low, but, okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Hockenberry?
I'm still having difficulty with some of the requests from the schools, from the school board. Of course, when that comes forward in actual projects, it will come to us, even though it's earmarked here in the CIP.
The CIP is just the funding source, but any of the school projects will, it's definitely for Mount Daniel, require a site plan. The Cherry Street may not require a site plan, because if they triggered a site plan, it's pretty unrealistic that they could bring that site into compliance. It will require a lot of zoning and building permit, staff review. So for any of the large projects, you'll see it again as it comes forward as site plans.
There's still a big sale job that people have to do for me on that project.
For the Mount Daniel, or the Cherry Street, or both?
Mount Daniel, I mean, on Cherry Street.
That one there?
And also, since I'm on schools, could we please have another document requested from them for the rest of the school system? This only goes pre-K up to 5, the info.
Mm-hmm.
And I would just like to see the balance of it all across the board, since we need to plan.
I certainly can do that. As you know, they had requested money for George Mason High School, but then understand not proceeding with it right now, so I'm sure we'll be-
And I think we need to have all that information every year so we can look at it to see differences that are, you know, changes and things along that line.
I'll forward to you the updated information, just as an FYI, for next round.
I would appreciate it.
Any other questions for Ms. Mester? Oh, any more? No? Okay. Can we open this for public comment? Did we receive any emails or speaker slips on the subject?
I have none.
Okay. Would anyone here like to speak on the CIP? You're welcome to? No? Okay. So we'll close out the public comment. Do we have any other discussion?
Mr. Lofterson?
I would just like to say, as I said about a month ago when I first saw this, that I really appreciate all the tremendous effort that the city staff has made into putting this together. I mean, this is, it's just a tremendous amount of work, and having been engaged with budgets for many, many years, it's just, I can really appreciate the work that's involved here. At the same time, I have to say that in a situation where you have an advisory council appointed by the city council that has advised it for years on having sustainability standards, you have ZOAC which came out with sustainability standards, and yet the political leadership does not direct city staff to even consider what the cost might be of meeting these standards. I just think, I'm very disappointed, and I think it reflects, reflects a lack of leadership in this city, and I think we really need to change this. I feel like sustainability is just not being taken seriously by the city government, by city leadership, and, and I think that this needs to change. I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot. If we look around, if we just benchmark with our fellow communities, they all have green building policies, they've all had it for a number of years, and, and have taken a leadership position in regards to their own buildings, and yet we haven't. So I just think that, and it's no reflection on your efforts or city staff efforts, the people who actually put this budget together, but I just don't feel that the directions in regards of the priorities for this city budget were really where they should be. It just wasn't taken into consideration, which to me means it's just not taken seriously in the community, or at least by our leadership. So I, I'm just, just disappointed.
I think I feel like if, as we move through the comp plan, we can basically make that a policy in the comp plan. We could also do a standalone action to council suggesting that it becomes policy. So there are other avenues that we could go ourselves. You know, we obviously can't do it tonight, we have a full agenda, but this is something that we maybe should talk about, perhaps we could talk about at the end of our work session this evening. There's other ways for us to move forward. But it sounds like, you know, as Cindy said, we really need a formal policy for staff to really make that part of each renovation and building that we look at. So I think that's something we could do tonight, okay. But I think it's going to have to be done offline first, and, and then maybe we could decide on a formal action as a group. Do we have any other discussion or comments on the CIP? Can we get a motion?
Madam Chair? I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve pursuant to Section 6.19 of the city charter and Section 17.08 of the city code, the FY 12 amended, the FY 13 to 17 CIP as presented on January 17, 2012, as revised through February 6, 2012, and support adjustments to the RSTP and SRTS grant projects reflecting pending state VDOT final approval for an earlier implementation fiscal year period, and reduce funding amount for the mandatory administrative fee of approximately 10% of grant award.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can we get a roll call vote on this, then?
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lofterson?
No.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teeds?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
The motion passes 5 to 1.
Thank you, Ms. J. And thank you, Ms. Mester. I agree with Mr. Lofterson's thoughts. Obviously, the staff has put a lot of work into it. I know you personally have put a lot of work into it, and I really appreciate all the detail in the binder. It makes it much easier to understand what we're doing.
Appreciate your action this evening, Commissioner.
Okay, we're going to move on to new business. We had the watershed management plan on the agenda for a recommendation to city council. Mr. Hicks, unfortunately, is downstairs with city council right now. I guess, are, do we know if they have finished the watershed part of? Okay, maybe Ms. Mester can go down there and check for us.
Maybe we can leave the-
So, can I get, maybe we could amend the agenda and flip the new business section, do the subdivision first and hold off on the watershed? Could I get a motion to that?
Ms. Teeds, I would like to move that we move up under new business, Section B, the subdivision of East Columbia Street, while we're waiting for the watershed.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to flip the agenda and do, under new business, do 8B first, then do 8A. And Ms. Perry is our staff person for this. And if I'm not mistaken, we've seen this subdivision before.
The subdivision before you was also applied for in 2010. The Planning Commission did approve that subdivision. It's identical to what you have in your packet this evening. There is a provision in the code that says if a subdivision is not recorded within a certain period of time, that the approval becomes null and void. And so in a case like that, the applicant would have to reapply if they wanted to record the subdivision and for the subdivision to be valid. And so that's the process that brings us here this evening. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission give preliminary and final approval to the subdivision for 117 East Columbia Street. The subject property is located in the R1A district and contains approximately 41,000 square feet. It is developed with a one-family dwelling and a detached garage. The proposed subdivision is to create two residential lots, proposed Lot 1 and Lot 2. Lot 1 would contain all of the existing structures, and Lot 2 is a pipe stem lot, and it meets all of the minimum requirements for a pipe stem lot in the R1A district, even though there is no development proposed at this time. But residential use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The subdivision application also includes a dedication of approximately 700 square feet for city right-of-way, and that was a code requirement. Staff review of the preliminary and final plots indicate that they meet all code requirements. Adjacent property owners were notified of the public hearing, end of the application, and no comments have been received to date. I am available to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here if you have any questions for him as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any questions from commissioners at this point? Mr. Lawrence?
Maybe you said this at the start, is this any different than what we saw before?
No.
Okay. Do we, and maybe I shouldn't ask you, but why are we doing this again? I mean, is, has something changed, or it just seems strange that staff would have to go through the same thing again? Do we know why it never went anywhere before?
I don't have the reason for why it was not recorded, but the reason why staff had to bring the application forward again is because of the code requirement that says if it's not recorded-
Yeah, no, I know why you had to. It's more, and if the applicant's here, I'm just curious as to why the time lapsed, and you need to-
Could you come up to the microphone, please? Could you come up and state your name and address, although we probably already have it? Thank you.
My name is Stephen Smith. I live at 117 East Columbia Street. Excuse me. The reason why I had to reapply was, unfortunately, I was unprepared at the time to record it. I had to have it legally. My mortgage had to be legally split in half. So the requirements that they had in terms of my equity and income at the time, I wasn't able to meet. And unfortunately, I waited kind of to the last minute and found all these things out. So I've cleared that out, so that's why I had to reapply.
Okay.
Okay, so- Okay, so now you'll be able to go forward-
Correct. Yeah, I don't want to spend any more time and money, and your time obviously as well, so.
Okay. No, I just, if everything was the same, I was going to be sort of reluctant, but-
Yeah, no, it basically was my lack of knowledge with my banking institution and not meeting their requirements.
Okay. Any other questions? No? I know Ms. Perry said we received no public comment. Ms. G, did we receive any speaker slips?
I have none.
Okay. Did anyone here want to speak on this issue? Okay, seeing no one, can we get a motion?
Yes. Let's see. I move that we, that we give preliminary and final approval for the subdivision of 117 East Columbia Street, RPC 53-102-005, one lot into two lots, application 201-20033. I move that we approve the subdivision of this parcel.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion at this point? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, excuse me, Ms. Teeds?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lofterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. G.
I only regret that they can't stay around and hear the watershed plan. Well, it's online. If you,
you can look at what we're going to talk about next, there's a watershed plan, you're welcome to look at it online. Okay, so we're on to our final new business, the watershed management plan. We were all forward to copying the packet. I'm assuming, Mr. Snyder, that Mr. Hicks was not able to come up?
Not yet. We're searching for him in the building.
Oh, okay.
If we need to tap dance, I don't know if we need to amend the agenda, but I wanted to bring up the property maintenance code. I was thinking about the section about exterior storage that we all had a whole bunch of problems with. Just wanted to run an idea by people, since I guess we have to do this next time.
Unfortunately, I didn't bring it with me, because I knew it wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, well, this is, this is me thinking on the metro, which is why my handwriting is almost completely illegible.
Illegible. I guess we can do a side here for a moment?
Yeah, since we're sort of killing time. But the idea that, you know, everything should be either in a building, a shed, or screened from public view, and then it went down and it listed, you know, lawn care equipment and construction equipment, tools, auto parts, and all these things. And we were trying to strike a balance between not being onerous and punishing people simply because they have their lawnmower out or their wheelbarrow out, but still not having your neighbor look at a trash heap. So what I was thinking was, where it talks about being, you know, screened from public view, basically say it needs to be behind solid fencing that is not less than one foot higher than anything you have in it. Obviously with, you know, the maximum fence height being seven feet. So the idea is if you've got something that's this high, you need a fence like this, so that someone from ground level is going to have an extremely hard time to see it.
Does that include trash cans? Because that's where-
Well, see, I don't think-
Much trash cans are kind of exposed to the street.
I mean, I wouldn't think so, since, you know, the trash cans are, you know, city required, and they're big and they're ugly to start with. But, I mean, I think what we need to do is get it so that, you know, things are screened, not just behind a fence, because it could be a three-foot fence and, you know, something that is six feet high, but basically say you need to have it behind something that's bigger than the thing it's behind. And the only exception I was thinking of, and this came down to, you know, I was looking at my yard in the back, we've got two six-foot fences that come together behind the garage. So, back of the property, behind the garage, two fences, you know, probably 10 feet or 15 feet from the building. So, not something you can see easily or at all from the street or anywhere else. But, you know, I've got a wheelbarrow, and so I put on one of those hooks where you wheel it up, you push it up, and it clicks, and, you know, the handles stand up above the fence, even though it's six feet. So what I had in here was the idea that you could have things attached to the fence, if there was some sort of permanent attachment, and then they could stick up no more than, you know, a foot over a seven-foot-high fence, which is the maximum fence. So you're giving people the ability to coherently and, you know, in an organized way store things, but you're not making it ridiculous where, you know, if someone can see it from the second floor of their house next door, then it's a negative.
So what you're saying is just putting it behind your house isn't enough? You have to put it behind your house, and then you have to put a fence around it?
Well, if you just put it behind your house, if there's no fence between you and your neighbor behind, then it's just a pile of stuff for your neighbor to look directly into. Because I know that was one of the concerns, was if you just shield it from the front of your house, that's not really solving any problems for your neighbor. I mean, I'm just trying to think of a way that-
Well, I just don't think that we can require people to put fences up in their yard.
Well, I mean, this says it has to be in a building, a shed, or be screened. I mean, this requires something. I'm trying to make it-
Well, screening can be bushes, though, which is what I kind of assumed, is that if you had bushes or shrubs, that that would be just as good.
I think it just depends on what stuff you're talking about.
And that sounds awfully complicated to me, one foot higher than the other, you know, it's just-
Well, I mean, we need to, we all hated this, so we need to think of something that's coming up.
That's adding another layer, so to speak. No pun in-
I like the more, I like the term "screen" better, because it allowed you a different kinds of ways of screening, but-
Yeah, but I mean, the problem with bushes is, you know, then do you get into, okay, it's got to be evergreen, it can't be deciduous, and-
No, that's true. But I do, what I do like-
There are layers and layers, and it's all going to end up being subjective. So we need to, you know, give some sort of guidance.
What I do like, I do like the terminology you had about ground level. I don't think we should be in the business of worrying about what people can see from the second story. So I think that in terms of visibility, it definitely, I think ground level is a great way of looking at that. That, so I think that that should definitely be part of it, because, because, you know, we could all be on the second story and see lots of things that maybe we would normally never be able to see.
Right. And maybe, you know, the idea of it can't stick up higher than a certain amount is getting too picky, and it's just if you have a permanent, you know, fixture of something and it sticks up over the fence, it sticks up over the fence. But at least you've done something so that you don't have a wheelbarrow that's, you know, sitting there behind your garage where you forget about it, and it's filled with water all summer long.
That sounds like an overkill. I'm sorry.
Well, then we need something else.
Then we just need different verbiage in there. We need something about, just, you know, we discussed all the different things in there and everything. I think that's getting to be just really, really a little bit much.
Well, can I suggest, I know that, Mr. Snyder, you guys were looking at other codes in this area. Is this similar to, like, Arlington or Alexandria, or was this something pulled from somewhere else?
What we were trying to do was avoid the permanent pile of-
Right. No, I understand that.
Things that don't move, so.
I just wonder if you could show a sample language, maybe from adjacent-
We'll look into that.
Yeah, just if we could see something that's active right now, that doesn't seem to be causing problems. But I do like, I do like the point of view issue, the ground level versus-
Yeah.
From wherever you are, that you could see things, but-
It's really the permanent pile of things that never moves, and is there for, you know, time after time begins to merge with the earth, if you will. Those become problems, not things people are using seasonally, that they're using as part of their regular maintenance operation.
And maybe that is part of it, too. It's like, it's that be ground level view, that it be there permanently for over a year, or, you know, and it's not seasonal.
Yeah, and Ruth, I mean-
I think we'd mentioned that as an idea at our last meeting, that regular usage, seasonal maintenance, those kinds of things is not what we're after. It's the, it's the permanent pile that then begins to harbor, you know, water, insects.
It's not a short-term pile of mulch someone gets when they get leaf mulch, and they take, they move it slowly.
Yeah, no, I was just, I was just going to say, Ruth, to a certain extent, yeah, we are saying, if you're going to keep this stuff, you should build a fence around it so people can't see it. Yeah. And I don't think that's unreasonable.
I know that you went over the fence, while I've been through my, too, the same thing. And I have some things behind my shed, but it's not fenced behind the shed.
Well, but what's behind the, what's behind the stuff? Is it a neighbor? I mean-
Well, at some point, there's a neighbor. Yeah.
I guess what you're saying is there're shrubs between your neighbor, trees between you and your neighbor?
No. I mean, what it comes down to is, the neighbor behind you shouldn't have to look at, you know, a pile of stuff. We wouldn't want somebody walking in front of your house to see either. I know, it's, it's-
I'll tell you what it is. It's some fencing that I periodically use in my garden. And when I'm not using it, I put it behind the shed. Now, my neighbor's not complaining, and I can't imagine that if somebody from the street saw it, they would be upset, or even if you saw it.
Right, but that's seasonal. I think that falls under what Jim was saying, is something where you use it every once in a while.
It's seasonal and it's functional. It's not junk. I think the big difference is usually what we're talking about is things that no longer have a function, other than I've just left it in my front yard or backyard. So, but you're using that. So I think you could-
The wheelbarrow that hasn't moved in five years, that's now being overgrown or filled with water.
Right. Like, if it's covered in ivy, we know you're not using it.
But just John's wheelbarrow would be fine.
Well, I think that's where we're getting it. Something that's being used seasonally, you know, we're not, we're not looking to go after people's ordinary maintenance of their property, but-
I think the intent behind this legislation is good. It just makes me nervous, you know, because neighbors get upset with other neighbors, and then they turn them in for their fencing behind the shed.
Well, but that's why we need to give staff something to go on when, you know, a neighbor who just wants to cause problems comes to the staff and says, well, look at this. I mean, you've got a property maintenance code, and go look at this. And, you know, staff needs to be able to say, you know, that's called a wheelbarrow, sir, and he's got it put where it should be, or that's, you know-
It's a still functional-
That's cedar fencing that she uses to, you know, grow her beans in the summer.
Poor staff that they have to go around and look at this stuff all the time.
Well, they have to now, and they can't do much about it. But, well, I think that was a good discussion. I think what, maybe if we could see some alternate types of code that address that, that might actually help us. But I think it definitely, we need to say that, you know, it's not, it's things that are, we're not looking for things that are still functional, that are seasonal, that are being used, that are only visible from the second floor. It has to be something that's visible from a ground foot level. So-
Those are helpful suggestions.
So are we still looking for Mr. Hicks, or has he left the building?
Cindy said his office is dark, so I think we should go ahead and proceed.
Okay. So we all received the watershed management plan. I guess I'll just give a description of what happened, because I was on the task force. Rob was as well, but unfortunately, he's out of town at a conference, so he couldn't be here, Mr. Meeks. And so basically, this watershed management task force was put together, had city council people, I was actually on there for the Village Preservation Improvement Society, Rob Meeks was on there for the planning commission, we had people from the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority, because some of the water issues involve their property. We had people from most of the major neighborhoods that had Cherry Hill, Winter Hill, Gresham Place, Hillwood Avenue, Sherrill Avenue, Stiples Court, Bishop's Court, with several at-large people. We had someone from the development community on there, so that we could get a nice cross-section of different people and look at the watershed management plan from the different viewpoints. We did it basically as a series of white papers. So there would be a white paper put together by the consultants, and then the whole group would go through it and look at it and put it together. And one of the big things that happened is the consultants went out and looked at every place in the city that had water issues, that had flooding issues, you know, just trying to, like, took photographs of it. They, a lot of places we found out, we don't have enough storm drain openings, for one thing. We have, there are a lot of places where water is pooling, because there are just not enough openings for the storm drain. And so they did a lot of surveying of the city. They also talked to citizens where there are traditional flooding issues, like, for one thing, City Hall has a runoff problem from our parking lot that goes across Great Falls and actually floods into yards across the street. So we looked at lots of different things like that. And then they scored everything and came up with the top projects that should be addressed by the watershed management plan. And some of the other projects that didn't make it into the top, maybe addressed at a later date. But they looked at things that would deal with runoff, deal with flooding, and specifically also deal with water quality. They needed to do all those things. It needed to help deal with water issues that citizens are having, but it definitely had to also deal with water quality. And one of the big issues coming down the line is I think a lot of you know, the federal government took over the Chesapeake Bay ordinance issues, because they felt the states were not moving forward. And this has brought a lot of new regulation into play. And we, as a city, I think what we're looking at over the next 15 years is estimate of $30 million worth of water improvements that we'll need to do to keep up with these new Chesapeake Bay ordinance. So part of what the watershed management plan is looking at is ways that we can meet those requirements, especially on water quality, while we also deal with our flooding issues. Because we are going to have to deal with the water quality issue by federal mandate. So if at the same time, we can also get rid of a flooding area and help citizens out, and help the city out by not having flooded streets, it's a win-win-win for us. And so that's basically a lot of what this report was looking at, the whole, especially the part where the consultants went out and looked at all the different things. I think there's a little controversy in which projects made it to the top, because obviously, if you're in a neighborhood that's flooding, you want your project to make it to the top. But there was a scoring put together so that it, that is very objective, that really looked at the amount of water we're dealing with. Is there an opportunity to fix some water quality, what the value of the project is. And the report, as you guys know, like, if you go towards the back, you can see the actual scoring that was done. There's actual sheets done here where you can see how many points they got, and how we came up with the list. So there's a whole, the whole back section of the report just shows the different checklists and criteria that were used to come up with those top projects. And so there is, there's a little bit of, like I said, controversy there, because I'm sure most people were hoping that their neighborhood problem would come to the top, but obviously, only some could come to the top. But you can see the report for each section, how they came up with the score, and why they came up with that score. The other big piece in this is the recommendation in here for a enterprise fund. Basically, we had a previous watershed plan. We did get quite a bit of it done, but it did not have any specific funding, so some things just didn't happen. And we could be a lot further along in meeting our Chesapeake Bay ordinance requirements if we had had better funding. So this is looking at doing a type of enterprise fund, basically a tax based on how much impervious surface there is on a specific property, both commercial and residential, because we both have a part to play. And actually, as new commercial is redeveloped, they are doing a really great job of dealing with their water. Now, the older properties is different, but the newer ones actually do a pretty good job because of all the requirements. And a lot of the runoff in this city frankly is from residences, so they have to be part of this. So I guess that would be, that would be the two big pieces here that I think citizens may be concerned with. One, they may not be happy with the order of the projects, but I do believe that the scoring was as objective as possibly could be, and it's set up to give the most value to the city. So the biggest bang for our buck, from flooding, from runoff, from water quality, from meeting Chesapeake Bay. And we need that, because we don't want to spend more money than we have to to meet those requirements, and we will have to do it. And then on the fund inside, that's the other big issue, because I think some people, I know there was a presentation, a public meeting on this a week or so ago, and there were questions from people who felt like if they had, like, I guess they were, like, saying if they had pavers, or they had things that weren't quite as impervious, they felt like they should get a credit. But I know one thing, we can't get into a system where there's a lot of credits involved, because that takes a lot of staff time. So anyway, I'm having to answer questions that I might have the answers to. Mr. Wodisca had his microphone, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know that you know the answer to this, but I was curious, on the enterprise fund, were they talking about square footage, or there was the discussion like percentage of property, or?
Um, I, there was a lot of back and forth, and I think we're really talking about, like, what square footage of your lot would be pervious versus impervious. And that, they haven't really got into the specific measurements, and- really got into the specific measurements, because partly, they're going to have to go out and test it and try to figure out how they're going to do it. Are they going to do it from satellite? Are they going to do a one-time inspection? Are they going to have to, you know, that's, I think the first, what they're looking for right now is a go-ahead that they should, they can look at doing an enterprise fund. So there's not, like, saying, by recommending this, we're not saying we're for, we're just saying we're for looking at permanent funding.
Yeah, I mean, just thinking about my own property, as we tend to do, and as a townhouse, to me, that seems, you know, if it's percentage of lot, I'm at about 99%. If it's percentage of, like, the neighborhood itself, well, then it's a different calculation. Or if it's just square footage, well, that's, you know, not that much square footage. So a townhouse, to me, is an area where that credit process or that ratio needs to be thought through, that's all.
Yeah, and maybe with the townhouse, one of the advantages of the townhouse is usually you're able to leave more open space in the community itself. And so, and you're right. So maybe, like, with Gresham Place, they have a lot of open space that's public, like, well, not public, but it's for everyone. So you're right. So for those, yeah, common areas. So for those types of project, you know, those types of development, you're right, it might have to go, like, on the community itself, and be more almost like an add-on to a condo fee kind of thing, like, where everyone gets their piece of it. And some, like, my husband and I own a business condo, an independent square, so that would, we would have the same issue in that it's business condos, so it probably would have to, we have to have one overlying enterprise cost against us, and it maybe outlays it to how much of the, how many condo, how much square footage of condo you have, because they're all different sizes. Yeah, exactly.
But I was just even thinking how interesting Russ's situation is, because that's backing up onto the park there, which is going to get a lot of work done on it, too. So, you know, that's really kind of interesting along those lines. And then, having not read every word of it, are the recommendations, when we get any proposals for development down along a four-mile run or anything, say, if, you know, with the East, West Jefferson Street? I mean, is there any, I'm just wondering how contingency and new developments, how that would work into proffers?
Well, I don't, this, I don't think this plan specifically lays that out. Because, I mean, if you're in a RPA or RMA, you already have to do certain things anyway. And as part of the proffers, we would always be looking for better water quality. And so any new development, we're looking for better water quality, for sure.
And that usually comes because of the new development.
Yeah, and I think, like, what you're talking about with the Howard Herman Stream Valley Park, which, one of the big projects in there is the opening of Coey, the Coey Branch. And what that will do is give us a nice naturalized stream and a prettier park eventually, but it will also deal with the flooding and water quality issues that are coming from that area. So that's a nice win, because the people that live near there, especially like on Sharrow, will probably see a lot less flooding, if we're able to deal with that stream. Because right now, we have a stream underground and a pipe that's not big enough, and it causes a lot of flooding issues.
Yes, Ms. Rogers?
Is this watershed management plan a, something that was done by the city and then studied by the task force, or was it something that was recommended by the task force?
It's really more recommended by the task force. It was done by, with staff, with the consultant crew, because the consultant crew is actually the ones who went around and photographed. And so, what they did is, they worked on each section, and you can look in the table of contents. So you have, like, a summary of watershed conditions, regulatory drivers, management programs. All of these were specific white papers that the staff and the consultants worked on together. And then each piece was brought before the task force. The task force went through it, made some changes, asked some questions. And then once we got to that section, that section to a final place, we said, "Okay, let's move on to the next white paper." So it's really been vetted by the task force, more than anything, and then recommended.
And have, so they have recommended this?
Yes.
And were there any controversial areas that they tended not to...
I think...
Except for that, their favorite project wasn't selected, aside from that.
You know, not really. I mean, I think the task force, everyone there saw the value of everything being done. And I think the task force had the same two issues that I saw from the public. It's, one, the order, but I think, at the end, once we saw how the scoring was done, we went through all the scoring, I think everyone was very comfortable with what the final list came out and how the scoring was done. And we felt like it was, it's a solid scoring process that can be used over and over again as we move forward through this plan. And then on the funding side, you know, there was a lot of talk about how to do that. But in the end, I think everyone pretty much agrees that we have to have a funding source for this, for this plan, or, and we really have no choice. If we don't fund this, we're going to have to, then we're funding projects to meet our Chesapeake Bay ordinance requirements without a plan. So this really, this kind of, it's, we all know we need the funding to do it.
Well, my reason for asking that question is because this is a very in-depth recommendation, and seems to me, on the surface, to be an excellent one. And I just wanted to make sure there was nothing I missed in here, because I kept thinking I can't find anything I don't like.
I will say that this is...
And having served on other task forces, they're not always unanimous when they, when, you know, the report actually comes out. So I just wanted to see if I'd missed anything. But I think it's a terrific plan, and certainly has great guidelines, and...
I just want to say, I thought that these consultants we work with here, the AMEC group, they were some of the best I've ever worked with, personally, with the city, and also within my own job, where I use consultants. Really, really good, just strong people, really care about water quality, care about what they were doing. It made a big difference, having someone really strong. And I know, coming off of ZOAC, you've had...
Yeah, I mean, we had a lot of contention on that committee. So, you know, this is excellent, and I think we should just go ahead and recommend it.
So do we have any other, yes, Mr. Lofterson?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I think that it was a very thorough process. And I guess I first got introduced to this process when I was back on the ESC. And you really have a good representation here of stakeholders with the watershed advisory group, and I like that, that, and they took a very active role. And it was, and the consultant was very thorough. So I think we have a really good product here. And I'm very, very happy with it. It's great. It's a good, good product coming out of a solid process.
Okay, thank you. And I really, we also thank staff, Bill Hicks, Jason Woodstrom, Kathy Allen, all of them worked just as hard as the consultants did to put this together. And it was just so much work that went into it.
One thing I might mention, there are a number of things in here, talking about possibly reducing sizes of streets, more flexibility in street design, more open space, cul-de-sacs with islands in them, which suggests that perhaps we should have, should adopt or consider some additional or different standards than we presently have, when you look at the scorecard, like, on Appendix E, I believe it is.
Right.
Also, in terms of what we're going to talk about later, the Washington Street Plan, where we have total paving, or, you know, coverage of an area that's in a floodplain, redevelopment may be involved in some of those floodplain areas, but can offer the opportunity to improve, I think, as Ms. Hockenberry mentioned, improve the situation there. So I think in some cases, development can be a big help, potentially. So we should look at that sometimes as an opportunity to improve a situation that may be low-density, but very bad in terms of paving and existing uses.
I agree with that. There is some, there's definitely some learning here we can do in terms of development. And along with the comp plan, that's some things we should consider. Well, can we get a motion?
You gave that job to me. I'll just, can it just be very simple?
Yes.
I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the City of Falls Church watershed management plan as presented, January 11, 2012 edition. Is that enough?
I think that doesn't. Can I get a second?
Can't refer to anything.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lofterson. Okay, can we get a vote on that, approving that recommendation, a motion, sorry?
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodyska? Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Lofterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. G. Okay, seeing no other business, can we move on to approval of the minutes for February 6, 2012? Anyone have any changes or comments on those minutes?
Move approval?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those pass. I guess, Mr. Lofterson, you'd be... Not absent for that one. Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Can I get a second? Second, please, for adjournment. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned now. Thank you.